Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, February 11, 2016. And may I have a real call, please?
Here.
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 Commissioner P. Placido is excused.
Would everyone please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Before we get started, I'd like to make an announcement that there was an executive
session held on Wednesday, February 3, at 6:30 PM for the Board of Commissioners to discuss a litigation matter. So having said that, at this time, I'd like to turn the program over to Chief William Kelly of the Abington Police Department.
Mr. President, members of the board, tonight we have several special events. And we'll begin right away with the swearing-in of our two newest officers. I'd like to first call up Lieutenant Kelly Warner, who will introduce to you our first officer, Officer Christian Shaw.
Good evening, Mr. President and Board of Commissioners. First, I'd like to introduce you to one of two of our officers for Abington Police Department, Christian Shaw. Christian Shaw is a local resident, lives up in Abington with his beautiful wife Kena and their two children. But prior to coming to us, Christian spent some time in the private sector, in the sales and business industry. He has a Bachelor of Science, yes ma'am. Are they like that? Yes, ma'am. His mother taught him very well, I'm told. A Bachelor of Science in Business Administration. When he has some spare time, he's very active in local officiating for basketball teams, including here in Abington Township. We're very pleased to have Christian here, Officer Christian Shaw.
And Lieutenant, would you like to introduce Officer Adrian McMenamin, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chief. It's my honor to introduce our newest officer, Adrian McMenamin. Adrian McMenamin, I didn't just hire him because I have him by half of an inch. Adrian resides in Elkins Park in Abington Township, and he's a proud father of three children, two of whom go to McKinley Elementary School. He resides there with his beautiful wife, My Lee. Before coming to Abington Township, Adrian was a Temple University Police Officer and also Shainy State University Police Officer. While at Temple University, he won meritorious awards for valor and just good solid police work. We're seeing that already in his first couple of months with us. Adrian also received the Director's Award at our Police Academy, Montgomery County Police Academy, a few years back. Adrian, and you'll hear his accent, he was born in Northern Ireland. Adrian McMenamin, he's a fine young man. It's a lovely accent. And one thing you can't teach, and Adrian has, he's taken this test more than a couple times. He's been through the process. And while at the academy, Abington Township Police Department has such a great reputation. And when he called and got the nod from the chief, you could hear the pride, and it exuded through the phone, that he was so proud to be able to protect and serve in his own community. And it's something that's very genuine, he's a very hard worker. Called it a dream come true, and to be able to work and serve and protect in his home community. So let's welcome Adrian McMenamin.
And now I'd like to call forward District Justice John Kessler, who's going to do Lieutenants, if you'd move out of the way over there and let them get in that corner, that'd be great. And Sarge, you know where we need everybody, so if you'd put them there, that'd be super. Excellent. Left hand on the Bible, right hand raised.
Place your, yes. Left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and please repeat after me. And after I say "I," state your name. I-
Adrian McMenamin.
Christian Shaw.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend-
That I will support, obey, and defend-
The Constitution and the laws-
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania-
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Township of Abington-
The Township of Abington.
And that I will faithfully discharge-
That I will faithfully discharge-
The duties of my office-
The duties of my office.
As a police officer for Abington Township-
As a police officer for Abington Township.
And I will obey the rules and regulations-
And I will obey the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures-
Policies and procedures.
Governing all sworn members-
Governing all sworn members.
Of the Abington Township Police Department.
Of the Abington Township Department.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Christian, I know you have your family members here. Why don't you introduce them very briefly to everyone?
I have my wife, Kena June. Sorry, let me say that. My wife, Kena, my son Jude.
My daughter Gabrielle.
And just a few more. I have my mother, Charlotte Shaw. My grandmother, Norma Shaw. It's Audrey Aina right behind her. And then finally, we have Larry Jackson, who's my mentor, and his wife, Gwen Jackson.
I'm a monofine word, so I'll try to keep this as short as possible. My wife, Mai. My daughter, Sienna. My daughter, Alina. And this man needs no introduction. This is my son, Aiden. I'd just like to follow on from Lieutenant Malloy and say, we became homeowners here three and a half years ago, before coming to work for the department. The reason why we picked Abington Township, we looked at a lot of different houses and properties in a lot of different townships, was the reputation of the school district, the reputation of the Police Department, and also the property taxes, which I thank you for, were fairly reasonable and affordable for somebody of my income. So I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to be here, and thank you once again.
Now I'd like to call up Deputy Chief John Livingood, who will introduce Sergeant Joseph Blythe, who will be sworn in as a Sergeant with the Abington Police Department.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, it's my distinct honor and pleasure to introduce to you our newest supervisor and sergeant, the Abington Township Police Department. Let me tell you a little bit about Joe Blythe. He's a native of Philadelphia, graduate of Cheltenham High School, served in the United States Military in the Police Corps from 1993 to 2001. During that time period, he served in a number of overseas and in the United States stations, including South Korea, Alabama, Georgia, and New Jersey. The most noteworthy of all his assignments when he was there was he was assigned to the U.S. Forces Command Honor Guard in Atlanta, Georgia, for the 1996 Summer Olympics. So that was quite an honor. Joe has a bachelor's degree in Administration of Justice from Penn State University, is a master's degree in Public Safety Administration from St. Joe's University. He's been employed by our department since 2001. And during that time, some of the special assignments that Joe has taken on, he's a hostage negotiator, accident investigator, a DARE officer, recruitment unit, our Honor Guard, and our Community Police Liaison. Joe has served as a youth mentor at Dobbin's High School and Arone High School in Philadelphia. He's currently a volunteer for Ruby's Kids, a youth charity in Philadelphia. And Joe is the proud father of two children, Mason and Zarina, his daughter. So Sergeant Joe Blythe.
Take it over there if you would, Joe. Over there, please.
Sergeant, place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, and please repeat after me. And after I say "I," please state your name. I-
I, Joseph Blythe.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend-
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws-
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania-
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Township of Abington.
And the Township of Abington.
And that I will faithfully discharge-
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office-
The duties of my office.
As a sergeant for Abington Township.
As a sergeant for Abington Township.
And I will obey the rules and regulations-
And I will obey the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures-
Policies and procedures.
Governing all sworn members-
Governing all sworn members.
Of the Abington Township Police Department.
Of the Abington Township Police Department.
Congratulations.
Joe, would you like to introduce the members of your family that are here?
That's my son and my roommate, Mason. It's my sister, my best friend, my niece, family and friends from all over the country. Thanks for being here.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm going to take the honor of doing the last one, which is the retirement of Lieutenant Thomas McNamara. Tom has been with the Abington Township Police Department since September 1 of 1974. Tom is a lifelong Abington resident, born at Abington Hospital, grew up on Susquehanna Road in the Roslyn section of our township, and he still resides in Roslyn. Tom graduated from Abington High School in 1971, and attended Montgomery County Community College with a Police Science Program. From '74 to '83, Tom served in the Patrol Division, where he served as a firearms instructor and a field training officer. And subsequent years, Tom would take over the operation of the range, and has done an outstanding job for the Police Department in that regard. In 1983 through 1987, Tom worked in the Detective Division, where he handled some of the most infamous cases and murders in Abington Township's history, and were successfully resolved. In 1987 through 1989, he was promoted sergeant and assigned to the Patrol Division. In 1991, he was assigned to the Detective Division, where he served there as a detective sergeant. And then back in 1994, he was promoted to lieutenant, and became lieutenant in the Patrol Division. He also served for a year in our Community Policing Division. He attended the FBI National Academy, the prestigious FBI National Academy, something certainly he's proud of, and we're proud of his attendance there. And from '97 to 2016, he has served as a platoon commander in the Patrol Division in charge of two sergeants and 13 officers. During the last 25 years of service, Lieutenant McNamara was in charge of the firearms program and the emergency management program, which I'm going to mention in just a moment. And for the last 14 years, he's headed the oral interview panel for new recruits. All of the new recruits that we've brought on over the last 14 years were because of the work of the oral interview panel led by Lieutenant Tom McNamara. Additionally, he's been an active member, and listen to this, ladies and gentlemen, an active member for the Roslyn Fire Company for the last 45 years, where he served as a lieutenant, captain, and trustee. He's currently a trustee and driver and pump operator for the Roslyn Fire Company. He had those number of years together, and it sounds like something like well over 80 years if you count them separately. That's pretty impressive. But ladies and gentlemen, the legacy that Tom McNamara is left with Abington Township, probably more than all those others, is his legacy in emergency management. Back in the late 80s, we had an emergency management program that was not sufficient, it was not up to par, it did not meet the requirements of the law even, in the state of Pennsylvania. And Tom took over that program and did marvelous things with it during that program, during that time. And that set off us becoming one of the best-known emergency management programs anywhere in the region. Tom also was involved with starting the Eastern Montgomery County Regional Emergency Management Group, as well as organizing two large disaster drills in Abington Township. He is recognized as an expert in that area all across the region. He's the one that helped us bring on Edma Morella and then Tom McInnany, the people that have taken it over since then. But truly, this is part of your legacy, Tom, something you have every right to be very, very proud of, and certainly the job that you've done in that, well, Abington Township will be forever in your debt. Ladies and gentlemen, retiring Lieutenant Tom McNamara.
When people talk about the 42 years, I always remind them that I was only five when I started, because I certainly don't feel that old. It's been my privilege and my pleasure to work in Abington. I could have retired 13 years ago, but I continue to work, I enjoy coming to work. But all good things must come to an end, and you get to a point where it gets a little harder to get out and come out in the blizzard that we had and things like that. So you get to a point where it's just time, and I know that it's time. So I'm not leaving here sad that I'm leaving. I'm leaving here, I'm looking forward to spending more time with my family, and I'll jump right into that. My wife Cheryl. My son David. My daughter Wendy. My son-in-law Terry. My sister Terry. And my sister Patty. My brother Kevin. And we got five grandkids here. Jason. Kaitlin. Jack and David. So I just have one question for you guys. Where are we going?
D.C.!
All right, that's what I want to hear. I just want to thank the chief, I want to thank the Commissioners for my opportunity here. I'm not going anywhere, I'm going to stay here. I still am going to run with the Volunteer Fire Department. I still plan to help Tom McInnany when I'm not out on vacation somewhere. And if anything bad happens, I'll still be around, so I'm looking forward to that. Thank you, Chief.
For you, Saddam. We're not done with you yet. One other thing here. So, and I'm very honored, you're my neighbor, as well as I see you at the firehouse, and so it's my honor to give this to you, Lieutenant Thomas McNamara, to acknowledge with sincere appreciation your 42 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Abington Township. Forty-two years, wow, look at that.
I was only five.
I know. So I've heard. September 1974 to February 2016. Congratulations.
Okay, I think that concludes the program, ladies and gentlemen. And as I've asked everybody if you would just please quietly and quickly move out to the hallway, so the board can continue on with its business. We appreciate their indulgence to allow us to do this in front of the board. If you talk outside and everything, that would be great. There's plenty of room out there, and you're welcome to stay as long as you'd like. They'd be taking photos and everything out there.
We thought the meeting was going to be shorter.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine.
The stitches come out some more.
Commissioners, I thank you for your indulgence. I know that this holds things up a little bit, and I apologize for that, but you can see how much it means to the families, especially when they get to see these things, especially in the prestigious environment in front of Board of Commissioners. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, we'll move on to our next agenda item. And before we get into the formal committees, I'd like to clean up a couple of volunteer boards and commissions that we are finishing on from last month, and some new ones that we're going to appoint this evening. First, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Joanne Kleiner and Meredith Gill for three years, for reappointments to the Human Relations Commission, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The motion passes. Next, an appointment to the Library Board of Trustees, a motion to appoint Teresa Dekembach to fill the unexpired term through December 31, 2016, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Next, for the appointment to the Shade Tree Commission, motion to appoint Timothy Gilmore to fill the unexpired term through December 31, 2017, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The motion passes. Next, for the appointment to the Economic Development Committee, motion to appoint Elizabeth Smith and Matthew Vehi for three years, and Erin Visa as an alternate member, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion passes. At this time, I'll move to appointments to the Advisory Board vacancies, and open the floor for nominations for the Planning Commission. Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I nominate Charles DeCello to serve this vacancy on the Planning Commission.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded for Charles DeCello. Any other nominations? Commissioner Myers.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Michael Alexander.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gillespie. Okay, any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Okay, it's been a motion to close the nominations.
Second.
Seconded. Okay, good. All right, at this time, I'll ask for, first, a count for Charles DeCello. Show of hands for Mr. Charles DeCello.
Seven, eight, nine.
Nine? Okay, thank you. So I'll ask for a motion to appoint Charles DeCello as member of the Planning Commission for four years, and I so move.
Second.
Okay. At this time, we'll move to appointments to the Vacant Property Review Board. This is a new board. If anyone would like an explanation on this particular board. Okay, if not, we'll ask for an opening, I'll ask for an opening for nominations at this time. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Move to open nominations?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is for a one-year term. This is for a one-year term. Just so you know, we're going to have three positions open, one for a one-year term, one for a two-year term, and one for a three-year term. So first, we'll move for a motion to appoint for a one-year term. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Mr. President, I move that we appoint Toby True to the one-year term on the Vacant Property Review Board.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other nominations for the one-year term? Hearing none, we'll take a motion or a vote on a one-year term for Mr. Toby True. All those in favor, by show of hands?
No.
Okay, unanimous? Okay. Next, we'll have a motion to appoint for a two-year term, an opening on the Vacant Property Review Board. Any nominations? Commissioner Rothman.
Bob Graves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Lorena Trujillo.
Lorena, true, okay. Okay, any other nominations? First, is there a second on that?
Second.
All right, any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Okay. At this time, we'll take a vote for a two-year term for the Vacant Property Committee, by show of hands, for Mr. Bob Graves.
Ten in favor.
Okay. And lastly, we'll move to a motion for a three-year term for, again, the Vacant Property Review Board. And I'll take nominations. Commissioner Sanchez.
Mr. President, I nominate Lorena Trujillo for a three-year term.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
So moved, okay. All those in favor of Lorena Trujillo for a three-year term, show of hands?
Unanimated.
Okay. All right, that should conclude all our openings on our volunteer boards and commissions. At this time, I'd like to get approval of the minutes, so I call on Vice President Stephen Klein.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the Board of Commissioners' reorganization meeting of January 4, 2016, and the Board of Commissioners' meeting of January 14, 2016, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion passes. At this time, we'll move to the Public Works Committee, and I'll call on Commissioner Tom Hecko, Director.
Thank you, President Luker. We have a fairly robust agenda this evening. We'll begin with PW1, which is the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission Transportation and Community Development Initiative Grant Program, and Simone Collins Landscape Architects, Resolution Number 16-010. And this is a motion to approve and adopt Resolution Number 16010 for the final Township Master Bicycle Plan. The plan has been prepared by Simone Collins Landscape Architecture in association with traffic planning and design, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you. With PW2, this is the Edge Hill Road Tyson Avenue Flood Control Street Reconstruction Project Reimbursement Agreement Number 064132-B-Supplement C. And this is a motion to approve Pinoni Associates' proposal for reimbursement agreement Number 064132-B-Supplement C for Edge Hill Road Tyson Avenue Flood Control Street Reconstruction Project in the amount of $593,082.43, which includes services for Part II Final Design, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The motion passes.
PW3, the 2016 HUD Program. And this is a motion to approve BCM Engineers ATC Group Services LLC to perform engineering services and surveying for three projects listed in the 2016 HUD Program in the amount- services and surveying for three projects listed in the 2016 HUD Program in the amount of $41,365 to be funded from the HUD Program, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Klein.
Thank you, President Luker. Mike, how many bidders did we end up getting, how many bids did we end up getting?
We ended up getting four.
Okay. And can you circulate a spreadsheet of the bids?
Sure, I can get that.
You didn't, I don't, I don't remember seeing anything between our committee meetings and...
There wasn't anything between the committee meetings. I, I did get it to the, for the agenda, but I guess it didn't get out to you guys tonight. But there were four bids ranging from $35,000 to $69,000. The lowest bidder was rejected because they didn't carry the proper insurances for liability.
Who was the lowest bidder?
Um, Shadr, Shadr, Eastern Shadr. They were the lowest. They were around $35,000. BCM was $41,000. Carroll was around $53,000, and Remington and Vert, Remington and Vert were around $69,000. Rough numbers.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
PW4, sidewalks on the eastern side of Rockwell Road. And this is a motion to authorize township staff to take bids to construct sidewalks on the eastern side of Rockwell Road from Roy Avenue to Old Welsh Road and to encumber up to $125,000 from the general fund balance, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Hecker.
Thank you, President Luker. We discussed this at great length in last week's committee meeting. I'm grateful to the Public Works Committee for its support of this initiative. This is part of a comprehensive effort to improve pedestrian safety on Rockwell Road over the last year, and it will involve several other measures. Assuming approval of this agenda item tonight, we'll be at work to schedule a committee meeting for all those who live on Orneal Rockwell Road to advise them of the upgrades that are taking place. And I would be very grateful to have the support of the full board this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Spiegelman. Ditto. Any other comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Yes, come forward and your name and address. Yes, right, could you adjust the microphone so... Yes, name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Fullerton. I live on Parkview Avenue, and I've lived in Abington Township with my husband for 23 years. And I am a daily commuter out of the Crestmount train parking station, and I've talked to Tom Hecker many times about the problems on Rockwell Road, both for the pedestrians and for those of us who are trying to get out of there at night, and there's no visibility, the cars are parked literally bumper to bumper. There are several problems going on there, one of which is that there are abandoned cars in the train station parking lot, left there either by the people that live in the homes that are enjoying the parking lot or by the automobile repair business that has moved into there. Right now, there are at least four cars in that parking lot that have been abandoned for months. And what this means to me, the commuter, is that I can't park there. And I try to park on the little street of Rubicon Avenue there, and this is what I get when I come home: parking tickets. So now, where am I supposed to go? I go to Willow Grove, try to park up there. There's no parking there either. If I can park there, I have to park way behind the Giant, and it's a hike for me. So now, I'm back to trying to park on Rockwell. Again, this is all because there are abandoned cars in that parking lot, and SEPTA, call SEPTA, they don't care about it. I'm also concerned because of those two-hour parking signs. First of all, why a 50-foot stretch of Rubicon Avenue needs a no two-hour parking sign is beyond me, but that's how I got ticketed three times. And I parked there for 23 years, and until last October, I never got a parking ticket. No one ever told me I couldn't park there. That automobile business has had flatbed trucks in the parking lot. They have had tractor trailers parked there for weeks with somebody living in the cab of the tractor trailer. They have their cars there when we get off the train at night. They're blocking the access to the station. You know, they've got their friends coming and bringing little children, and little children are running around while everybody's trying to get out of there. It's very difficult. And while I appreciate the walks, or the sidewalk, and that's fantastic, and I appreciate that there's gonna be a stop sign, we still need to get that parking lot open and accessible for the people that need to take it every day. And I'm at my wit's end for what to do. So that's my concern, but I'm totally in favor of the, of the sidewalks. I have no problem with sidewalks.
Well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Hecker and Commissioner Spiegelman, let me take a question from Commissioner's opponent.
I just wanted to ask the Speaker, she contacted SEPTA Police.
I have.
The SEPTA Police Department?
I've called SEPTA Customer Service. I've called the Police Department. They don't care. And they flat-out told me that they don't care because bottom line is, that's a free parking lot. I have begged them to come in and clear the drain so it doesn't flood every time it rains, and I barely could get them to do that. They just don't care, and I mean, they flat-out have told me that.
But you did speak to SEPTA Police Department. Was that their responsibility?
I've called so many SEPTA personnel over the years. I, I could tell you 100% that I talked to the SEPTA Police, but I very well may have. I mean, I, I've given up on SEPTA because they don't seem to care.
Commissioner, we'll be glad to coordinate that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, numerous entities are aware of the situation.
Yeah, I know.
Right, and all the Commissioners are, and the police are also, so they are actively working to get remedies to these issues that you brought up. But we, thank you for bringing them to our attention.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments from residents regarding Rockwell Road? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. PW5, this is a bid award Ready Mix Concrete, and this is a motion to accept the lowest responsible bidder and enter into a contract with Delaware Valley Concrete in the amount of $19,923 for the purchase of Ready Mix Concrete as per bid specifications, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
PW6, this is a bid award SuperPave Asphalt Paving Material. And this is a motion to accept the lowest responsible bidder and enter into a contract with Eureka Stone Quarry for Part 1 of the bid in the amount of $690,000. Also, Eureka Stone Quarry for Part 2 in the amount of $43,200 for the purchase of SuperPave Materials as per bid specifications, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff?
Yeah.
Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And our final order of business, PW7, Tuckney Creek Stormwater Feasibility Study. This is a motion to authorize staff to formally advise the Army Corps of Engineers of the township's desire to have the three proposed stormwater retention areas in Abington Township severed from the Tuckney Creek feasibility study and request a separate 205 study to be performed on the Abington Township watershed, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this is the, these are the now infamous Baderwood Basins that were proposed as part of the Army Corps of Engineers' study into flood remediation in Cheltenham Township. And I've worked very, very closely with Commissioners Sanchez and Farren, and also Engineer Powers and Manager LaFeveres, and Manager LaFevere and Township staff, and actually worked with the Army Corps and Cheltenham Township to try to sort of get this figured out, because these original proposed basins would have required the acquisition of either directly, direct acquisition of land or acquisition of easements on a lot of private property. So now, what we're gonna do is, that plan is gonna, that, those, those three proposed basins are being completely removed. Cheltenham can move forward with the six-basin plan, the six basins entirely within Cheltenham Township. And working with the Army Corps of Engineers, we're requesting a 205 study, which is the same kind of study Cheltenham did, but this time focused on Abington Township and the effects on Abington properties in order to bring relief to not only those folks lower down and lower elevations of Baderwood like Beta Road and Wantamaker Road, and the folks in Switchville on streets like Stewart and Glenwood, but also people in other parts of the township that were totally outside the scope of this study. So ultimately, I think this is gonna be a, this is really gonna be a boon to everybody. It's gonna be the best way forward. And I do want to especially thank Engineer Powers for all of his, his insights into, into this. So hopefully, we can get this all approved, and thank you in advance.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? Vice President Klein.
I don't know, Mike or Mike, if you can explain the 205 study process and how that, how that affects the township.
Well, they'll, they'll study the entire township, not just, just this one, one area. And, and what we're hoping to get in there is the Caspic area, which we have some ideas of what to do there, bring in the school district property and their, their improvements. They're gonna be doing a nurse site as well as, you know, underground storage in that area. The study takes a, a year or two, and they'll do a feasibility study, and what happens is it's 50%, it's funded by the Army Corps, and the township picks up 50%, I think. Am I right, Mike? Yeah. And the, the study then will move forward, and they'll pick up, I think it's 63% of the, of the cost in the township would have to pick up or find funding for the other 33% in the future, whatever, whatever results they come out from the study.
And is it, are we contingent? Is it contingent on doing the 205 study to get the basins removed from the Cheltenham study?
Well, it's not contingent on it. It was something we're recommending because we don't wanna just leave our residents, you know, that have some severe concerns, especially on Beta Road, Wantamaker Road, and down to Stewart and so forth, out, you know, without some kind of outlook that we're gonna try and move forward with something else in the future.
And what, and what's the cost? Do we know the cost of the study?
They haven't come up with that cost yet, so we don't know for sure what that cost's gonna be. You don't have to accept the study, but this is, you have to make the request first, and then they'll come up with a dollar amount, whatever it's gonna cost, they think it's gonna cost them, and then we'll find out what that number will be.
And if we do the study, is there any obligation to do any of the work that they suggest in there?
No, there's no obligation. You know, again, it's, again, funded by the federal government, 63% and the other. Then, there's always state funding and other funding we can look into when we get that far along, like Cheltenham.
But we're not tied into actually implementing any part of it or certain portion of it?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Any from staff?
Commissioner Luker.
Sorry, Commissioner Farren.
Thank you. Two things. Actually, Commissioner Klein, I think we have like a year or two before we even be responsible for any of the funding, so we can, going forward, figure out how we're gonna budget that money, so we have a year or two to plan ahead, so we're not, in this year, obligated to, to put any, any financial support behind it. And secondly, I just want to thank, echo Commissioner Spiegelman's sentiments, but remind people in our ward that we have people who are affected on both sides, people whose, whose property would have been encroached, but other people who would be benefiting from it. So by, by conducting a larger study that looks at all of Abington and not just those three areas that were told to us, we're, we're looking to give, as Mr. Powers said, give a better possibility for a solution for all residents involved in Abington. So thank you to everybody involved.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners?
I did one question.
Yes, Vice President Klein.
When they do their study, is their study mostly done through mapping, or do they actually do physical survey work?
Well, they don't, they don't, they won't fully engineer. They get up to a 30% design stage, and then, once they get into the project, then the other 70% design work comes, comes with it. But they're, they're pretty confident they can do what they need to do or what can, has to be done if, if everybody accepted their study.
And is most, like I said, is most of that done through GIS mapping and, and aerials, or do they actually do physical study?
Yeah, they, they do a lot of GIS mapping. Fortunately for us, we have a lot of our own mapping, and we have a lot of our own work already completed, so I've shared that with them, so that they at least have that start of what we have and can see what we have as far as our hydraulics that we've done all down there and, and how we've looked at everything.
Right. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, any other comments? Commissioner Spiegelman.
One, one quick addition to that. Also, data and other information that they gleaned from their 205 study on Cheltenham's behalf, but the things that took place in Abington, they'll, they will factor that in, so it's not, it's not gonna be a lot of wasted redundant work. They will take, they'll, they'll, they'll bring in that knowledge from other studies and, you know, and now, actually, I think we have very open a lot of communication between Engineer Powers and the, the local Army Corps, Army Corps reps. So it won't be, there won't be a lot of redoubled wasted efforts.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from Commissioner Gillespie?
Thank you. I do have one comment. I, I am all for it because I know our, our whole area, Ward 12 and Ward 13, Eastern Road, doesn't stop the water. It still keeps coming down. So I am definitely for it. We need, we need any help we can get throughout the township.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? So, name and address. After this gentleman, come forward, state your name and address, please, and we'd like to keep your comments within three-minute timeframe.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name's Leonard Blazaro. I have a property at 627 Wantamaker Road, and I was recently by accident found out that this property is in a new flood zone where it was not before. And I've been speaking to people on the Commissioner basis as well as the people in the office.
Could you hold one second? I don't know if you're going on the same, on the right topic.
Are we talking about the action request, Agenda CE2?
No, no, that's coming up.
PW7.
Oh, okay. Okay, you're ahead of me. Okay.
The worst.
We haven't gotten to that yet.
You know where, you know where I am, Mr. Blazaro.
I apologize.
No, that's okay.
It'll be the next agenda item.
Right. I didn't think you were on the, on the right. The gentleman's probably, next is probably also for that same agenda item. So are there any other public comments on the Tuckney Creek Stormwater Feasibility Study? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, President Luker. That concludes the Public Works Committee's business.
Before we move to the next committee, the young lady who spoke regarding Rockwell Road, I just want you to know that Commissioner Hacker has been actively pushing to get results to all the items that you brought forward along.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we are actively aware, we're aware of the situation and we're moving to get all those problems addressed.
If you can follow me down later.
You're welcome. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ben Sanchez, Director of the Code Enforcement Land Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have CE1 subdivision SD 1505 Priceless Homes LLC, 130 Fisher Road. This is a motion to approve the subdivision application of Priceless Homes LLC, owner of the property located at 130 Fisher Road, Abington Township. The applicant proposes to subdivide the property into two lots. Lot number one will contain the existing single-family dwelling on a lot of 13,108 square feet. Lot number two is proposed for development and is plotted at 12,885 square feet lot. Both lots comply with the dimensional requirements of Section 303.3 of the zoning ordinance. Both lots will be served by public water and sewer. The property is owned in the R3 residential district in Ward Number Four of the Township of Abington, and the motion is subject to the conditions and waivers as listed in the agenda, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next, we have CE2 Public Hearing on Ordinance Number 2102 and Ordinance Amending Chapter 162 Zoning, Section 600 Flood Plane Conservation Overlay District.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on Ordinance Number 2102 and Ordinance Amending Chapter 162 Zoning, Section 600 Flood Plane Conservation Overlay District. And at this time, I'd like to call on Zoning Hearing Officer Mark Penicau for a brief explanation.
Very brief, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. As the board's well aware, we've been working on revising the zoning ordinance now. We're into year five. As part of a FEMA mandate, the ordinance that you see in front of you was originally pulled out of the zoning update and put as a standalone ordinance due to the fact that we're obligated to adopt it honor before March 2nd of this year. So what you see in front of you is a standalone ordinance, 2102. There's a packet in front of you and, just a moment here, find my key. That's the pointer. Nathan, I'm lost. There we go.
Right arrow.
Got you. What you see in front of you, we just went over with FEMA's mandate, the township, what we elected to do was use the model ordinance from Montgomery County. What we've done there is revise the model ordinance to meet the needs of Abington Township. The revisions that you see in this ordinance are fairly minor, and what you see, the main prohibition on a floodplain is carried forward from our 96 ordinance, which we still do not permit any type of construction within a floodplain. Your setbacks will continue to be measured from the edge of the floodplain line and not the property line. We made a change to the base flood elevation. In the event that any kind of construction is approved within the limits of the floodplain, you can have an impact of no more than one foot. Structures, if they are built within a floodplain, the first floor elevation has to be a minimum of two foot above flood elevation. That's actually carried out of our existing ordinance, and it marries up with the standards within our building code. One of the changes that we had is if you have an existing home now that's within a floodplain and you go to replace an existing air conditioning unit, air handler, generator, those appliances will now be required to be elevated at least two foot above flood elevation versus being located at grade. The ordinance in no way, shape, or form determines which properties are or are not within a floodplain. That's done strictly by the flood insurance rate maps that FEMA puts out. And the last page of this, the ordinance has been reviewed by Abington Township Planning Commission. You'll see three dates up there. There were a number of revisions to this as it went through. The ordinance was reviewed by Montgomery County Planning Commission. More importantly, we worked with Ju Schrahl, Montgomery County, who's their chief environmental planner. We were directed to him through FEMA. He's the area review party for us. The ordinance itself was recommended by all the reviewing agencies, and as I said to you before, the new insurance rate maps become effective by March 2nd of this year, and Abington Township is obligated to forward an ordinance, a revised, updated ordinance to FEMA by that date. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them for you.
I have a question, Mark.
Yes, sir.
So on page three, I think, it says this ordinance does not determine which properties are listed within the limits of the floodplain. The maps are approved. In other words, FEMA determines.
Yes, sir.
Who or who is not in the floodplain.
Yes, sir. The maps are forwarded to us. They're flood insurance rate maps. They're forwarded to us, the municipality, by FEMA, and...
So we react as a result of what FEMA dictates?
Correct.
Now, we're going to be having a formal meeting with FEMA in the near future?
We have an informational meeting with FEMA that's been scheduled for March 23rd over at the Little Theater at the junior high. FEMA's agreed to come down, make themselves available to Abington Township residents that have any questions as to the new maps and how it relates to their property individually. I'll be at that meeting. I'm sure there'll be other township staff.
Have we been able to get an insurance expert to come to that meeting?
We're working on that, Commissioner.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Could we repeat when that, when and where that meeting is?
Yes, Commissioner. There's also a mailing that was done to all the 812 properties that are now listed according to the new firms within an individual mailing to all those residents.
What was that date again?
March 23rd, 7:00 PM.
It's a little thinner. Commissioner, I'll make sure it gets posted on the web tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other questions of commissioners? Any questions of Mark by staff? All right, Mark, I think I'll turn it over to any questions from the public. The gentleman who came forward a few minutes ago, I think this is your opportunity to speak. You can come forward, name and address, and try to limit your comments to a three-minute time frame.
I'm making it extremely short.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Leonard Lazaroff. I have a home at 627 Wantamaker Road, and I purchased the property approximately three or four years ago. My daughter lives there. By accident, I had come to the township, there's some questions about making some alterations to my property. I was told to go up to the engineer's office, and then I was told that my property's in the floodplain. I found out, I asked, when did that occur? And I was told by one of the engineers that it occurred the 1st of January. Then I asked a few other people when it occurred.
So the 1st of January of what year?
19, this year.
Oh, this year, okay.
2016. I then asked, I saw on the map that it said March 2nd of 2016. And then I went down to the first floor, who I guess the...
Code enforcement?
Code enforcement, which is who's going to be handling all of the FEMA situation with the residents. And I was given another date. I was given a date in April, and then I said I would have six months from that date to make any appeals. Well, I spoke to FEMA, I spoke to the people in Harrisburg, I spoke to the people in Washington, and then I realized that I have the correct information now. But there was some misinformation given to me along the way. I subsequently, none of the houses that are in my block are, were in the floodplain prior to this, and I've since gone to an engineer. Engineer's done some preliminary elevation studies and feels that we are not going to be in the floodplain and is going to work with FEMA to amend this. I was also told that I shouldn't start this prior to the exception of the date because it would revert back to the old floodplain where we were not in the floodplain. My main question is, there seems to be quite a bit of misinformation circulating regarding this, and I'm just trying to come here and explain to the committee that I'm extremely frustrated with getting a lot of different information from various people. I was also told that the township has no responsibility to inform any of the individuals in the township about it. It's up to their discretion. I spoke to a Daniel Fitzgerald in Harrisburg, and he told me differently. I also spoke to FEMA, and they told me differently. So again, I'm getting a lot of information that is not that accurate, and I just like to work with the new, with this new ordinance, with the people that are mandating this, and try to get the information that would properly give me, owner of property here, some correct information. I know that there are over 180 to 200 new residents that will be in the floodplain, and I was under the impression that a lot of work has been done with the old engineers to reduce the floodplain. So I have a lot of questions, and I just wanted to allow you to know that I'm, I know everybody is really trying to give me as much information as I can, but a lot of it is contradictory and a lot of it is not accurate. So that's it in a nutshell.
Okay.
It seems like this meeting that we're having, which is on the 23rd...
Right.
Is, is three weeks after the new floodplain ordinance goes into effect, and I was hoping that it could have been a little earlier because we had a six-month period, there was a meeting with the engineers that occurred on September 2nd, and nobody was ever notified. I stumbled on it. It was just an accident. So, good accident, I guess. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you for your comments, sir. And hopefully you'll attend that formal meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'll be there.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Name and address, and if you'd like to keep your comments within the three-minute timeframe, sir?
Pat Dooley from 625 Wantamaker Road in Jenkins Town, right next to Lynn. Yeah, it seems a problem is, a big problem is a problem of notice because with these, with the change in the flood...
Could you speak up, sir, or bring the microphone closer?
It seems to be a problem of notice, legal notice. If you're going to perform a taking, that is, if you're going to force, if you're going to put some resident for the first time into a floodzone, they're going to have to pay for flood insurance. And if and when people sell their homes, they're not going to get full value because people don't want to pay full value for a home in the floodzone. Now, Abington Township takes a position that they don't have to notify anybody that this was underway. FEMA takes a position that they don't have to notify anybody in the township that this is underway. So who does have the responsibility for notifying the homeowner like a year ago that this was happening so that the homeowner could become aware of it and exercise his or her rights? Very frustrating. You're costing, you're costing us money if this goes through, well, it's going through. And we have, we have a group of homeowners on Wantamaker Road who are going to appeal this, okay? This area has never flooded through all the great storms that have been around. It's never flooded, okay? And the railroad on one side is about 20 feet down. It's almost impossible for this area to flood. And FEMA and the township keep doing this.
Sorry, if I can just address that. You're absolutely right, but unfortunately, it's not us. It's the feds who determine where the floodplain is. They just pointed on us that we cannot allow anyone to build within the floodplain. So the federal government, and I fight this every day, I own lots of property, tells me portions of my property are in the floodplain. As a township, it's an unfunded mandate. We then have to, anything, any notification we do or anything we enact is basically because we have to respond to what the feds have decided is actually in the floodplain. We agree with you 100%. It's not fair. They go and do it, and for an individual to have to fight it, it costs money, and it's not a good thing.
Right.
It's just forced upon us. It's not something we like either.
And if I'm reading that FEMA pamphlet correctly, the township had the right to say, "No, don't put those 12 homes in the floodzone."
That's not true.
The township had the right to do that preliminarily with FEMA. You didn't do it. So it's, I mean...
We can, I mean, we can argue as much as we can, and I know, I mean, the engineer, we did, we did argue with FEMA over a lot of the property.
Mike, didn't we react to the original maps?
Yeah, we did react to the original maps. We sent them in some of the information we had with the bridges and the locations. Temple actually did the study for FEMA, but we gave them that, all that information. Regardless of what we gave them, they still came out with their new floodplain maps showing the properties in the floodplain. But the township is not required and should not determine who is in the floodplain and is not. That is FEMA's responsibility, and they initiate the maps. And then what we do from there is try to notify the people in the end, you know, if they're in the floodplain or not in the floodplain. We do have a list of properties that are in the floodplain, and we keep that in our office. And we've taken the sketchy maps that FEMA gave us, and we've overlaid them into our GIS system and actually put the actual parcels on the map so we can actually see where these properties were.
How much time did your office spend doing that? I mean, that's a time-consuming process.
We spent over a year or two. When FEMA first came out with this, it was a couple of years ago. I did provide the one gentleman with the date where they did notify, they put it in the Times Chronicle, they did it twice. I went over to Upper Dublin, that's where the hearings were held, in Upper Dublin, and we went from that point. But it was several years ago when they actually started this whole process.
And you're doing that to try to protect our citizens the best you can from what the federal government's determining is in the floodplain and what isn't in the floodplain, correct?
That's correct. And the problem is, is what FEMA is doing is because in the 70s and 80s, a 100-year storm was five inches of rain in 24 hours. Now it's up to nine inches of rain and it's growing because every storm we get is bigger than the storm we had before. So, you know, we get 10 inches of rain in three hours, they take those numbers and run them back through their system, and that's why the flows, I think the flows down there in Wantamaker Road went from about 900 CFS to over 1,200 CFS, and that's why the floodplain grew and some of these homes ended up in the floodplain. Now, we do have, back in 97, we did go through a process where I think these two gentlemen's properties weren't in the floodplain and were ruled weren't in the floodplain. So we're waiting to see from FEMA if we can still hold our 97 study and then say they're not in the floodplain.
Right.
We do have them on our list as from 97, not, they were taken out of the floodplain.
So you're still working on that right now?
So we're still working on that. I, you know, we still have to make sure that FEMA agrees with it and allows us to do that and use the old studies, you know, from before.
Thank you.
Well, I still don't have an answer as to whose responsibility it is to write to the homeowner and say, "You know, it looks like there's a good chance that FEMA is going to place you in the floodplain." Either a regular mail sent, regular or certified mail from somebody, either FEMA or the township, saying, "And this may cost you money. You may be well advised to see your attorney." You know, you're taking money and you're not giving any notice.
Oh, but I believe we did send that notice, correct, Mark?
It was about, well, we originally sent, I think about six or seven years ago, we did send out a notice that the new floodplain maps were out, the new properties were going to be mapped into the floodplain. We did a mass mailing throughout the township, and at that point, they were talking about putting 2,000 homes in the floodplain. That's, we're working with FEMA, we've gotten it down to about, what, 812?
It's 812.
Eight hundred and twelve.
Of which the township probably owns 30 of those.
Right. So we've worked it down to that number with FEMA. Again, we're still, we're going to continue to work with FEMA and try to work with, for the residents to, if they're, I believe these homes are not in floodplain, and we'll continue to fight for them as hard as we can.
Just so you're aware, commissioners, when Michael said we did mass mailings, what we did was a flyer insert that was put into the tax bills that were mailed out.
Right.
Rather than do a separate mailing for six or eight cents per household, it was sent out township-wide that the maps were out there, they were out there to be considered. And at that time, we've done it twice. First, they were supposed to be adopted in September of '09, and then again, I think it was September of 11 or 12.
Right.
In addition to that, Michael's had the maps up on the township website. You know, it's out there, and I don't know what else to tell you.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, it's out there, and I appreciate the historical context that the other gentleman gave, but there must be an inflection point in that legal process. Maybe it was on September 1st of '15 when it was preliminarily approved. Must be an inflection point where you mail the homeowner, you say, "This is what's going to happen. We're going to, this is going to cost you," you're not going to say this in the letter, "but it's going to cost you money if this goes through." There's got to be some point, not five years ago, six years ago.
I think this would be a good question you could bring up at that. This is a good question you might be able to bring up at that meeting.
It's a little bit late then, isn't it?
Couldn't FEMA...
It's a little bit late for everybody then.
Couldn't FEMA, couldn't FEMA send the letters out since they're the ones making the calls?
Well, that's why I said, he could bring this up at the meeting that FEMA's...
We have to have an ordinance. We don't have any choice or we get in trouble as a township.
Again, FEMA, FEMA doesn't even know a single property in Abington.
They don't know addresses.
They don't know one property from another.
I understand that. What I'm saying is though they, they put us in a position, they put the folks in a position.
It wasn't until we overlaid our maps and came up with at least a list. Like I said, the list was around 2,000 when we originally started.
I understand.
We had notified those people back then of the 2,000 homes we sent out in mass mailing. And then, like I said, we worked it down, but until we actually have a final determination, the final plan, we can't tell you you're in the floodplain until we have, March 2nd, when we officially have these maps, and then Mark's, you know, has all the information.
I do understand that, but it is just frustrating because here we are with constituents, you know, upset because we didn't get in touch with them. I have sold properties on Wantamaker Road, and I know we did have to, I had, you know, I had to argue with FEMA to just, because you're on the high side.
I'm sorry, did you what?
You're on the high side. You're on the railroad side.
Yeah.
So water's not going up there. You know that and I know that.
Right.
Noah would be here in his ark, I mean, really, if it goes to your house. Shabbat shuf.
It's Noah's ark on one end...
I understand that.
And dry on the other end. It's bizarre.
I understand your frustration, and it is frustrating for all of us.
Commissioner Spiegelman?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
If I, just, I will just chime in briefly because Mr. Dooley and Mr. Lazar, they are both residents of Ward 11, and I, I share your frustration. As I expressed, I expressed to Mr. Dooley in email and Mr. Lazar over the phone, it has been difficult to get completely consistent information from FEMA. Depending, depending on whom you ask, there are some, there are various answers that don't entirely jibe with one another. However, ultimately, if, if you gentlemen wouldn't mind waiting to the end of the meeting, I would very much like to, to, to talk with you a little bit about this, if you're, if you're able to, otherwise we can speak over the phone, to talk a little more about this. And, and I will also be attending that March 23rd meeting.
Thank you.
To get some direct information from FEMA.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Yes. Make it brief, please.
Yes. I was just, if I heard it right, the township has had the maps for years, and originally the maps included 2,000 households. Now you're able to get it down to 800 households. So evidently, I was told that the township has to take what FEMA tells them for gospel. They can't change things. But if it was originally 2,000 houses, and now that it's down to 800 houses, things were changed. So if I'm hearing it right, it's more misinformation. I was told that what FEMA does, you can't question. We have to just take the ordinance and roll with it and, and, and enforce it. But I just heard that there were supposedly 2,000 in there, and now it's down to 800.
And then, and then again, where's where we question FEMA?
But didn't the township...
You asked a question, you asked a question, the township engineer is going to answer it.
Once, once we get it down, got it down to the 800 number, FEMA's fixed on that number, we have to accept that number. We cannot fight it any further than that because we're not, we, we provided them with the hydraulics we had down there, we put in new pipes, we put in a new drainage system, we put a whole new, a whole set of works down there, same thing along the Sandy Run, we replaced the Johnson Avenue Bridge, we put a new cover under Susquehanna. So we did provide them with all that information, and that's why we got the numbers down because we gave them the information we had. But in the end, once they came up with their hydraulic study through Temple, we have to accept that hydraulic study.
Oh, okay.
And that's the number, that's the number the engineer's talking about, is the 800 is after we've gone through the appeal process and through the comment period after the original maps were put out.
And that was in September?
The engineering department did all their mapping, and we're able to provide their, their on-the-ground information, which was able to reduce the number from 12, from 2,000 down to 800.
And that was...
But once FEMA closed the door on the comment period and appeal period, the maps became or enforced, or now become enforceable, and that's the number that stays. The only way that it changes is if the individual owner or groups of owners want to go out and appeal them separately, which is what you're doing already.
Okay, but again, maybe somebody, if, if they were, if the engineers said there was 2,000 in zone, and they got FEMA down to 800, that means that the engineers in this township does have something to say to FEMA regarding their flood zone.
Correct.
Well, I thought I heard that they have nothing to say, that once FEMA sets the maps, they just regulate.
There is a difference between, the speaker is, the way, with all due respect, but the way you're saying it, you're making it sound as if we say to FEMA, "Hey, we want these 1,200 homes out," and then FEMA just takes those 1,200.
Oh, no, 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 I understand that.
We provided information to FEMA, we, we provided documentation to FEMA, they completed their studies. Once they had completed those studies, they determined that those additional 1,200 homes weren't in the flood, the floodplain, and only these 800 were. But at the end of the day, FEMA determines what the flood map is and where it is and what's included in it. And even if we said, "No, no, we think you should take out this street and this street and this street," it's FEMA that makes the final determination, not the township.
I understand, but when was, when were there's, when was that meeting? What date? Was that September of 2012?
I think as Mr. Powers indicated, that's been going on for the last couple of years with the exchange of information with FEMA.
That's correct. It's been going on for several years, and I, I gave you the date, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I told you when it was publicized in Times Chronicle.
Yeah, yeah. It was on the, it was, the meeting occurred in September of 2015.
No, that wasn't the date I gave you, it was prior to that. I think it was, I forget what it was, but like I said, we've been working with FEMA, we've been working on your property. Your prop, your properties were taken out of the floodplain because there were studies done that showed that they weren't in the floodplain. Problem is, there's a new study now, they have to evaluate what Temple has given them the information and what the old study was to concur if your property's not in the floodplain or not. We just got to make sure if they do, then we can say your property's not in the floodplain. Your particular property may be exempted out, and your general, other gentleman's property may be exempted out.
Well, yeah, we, we can't change the floodplain map at this point. All we can do is...
Sir, in all due respect, I think Commissioner Spiegelman offered to get with a few folks after the meeting.
No problem. I'm sorry to take up so much time.
No, that's okay.
I'm just trying to get a clearer understanding of how it works.
Right. Not a problem. Thank you, sir. Any other comments from residents? Okay.
Mr. President?
Hearing none.
Mr. President?
Sir?
Before we vote, after that long exchange, I just have to very quickly say zoning officer Penacow has been working basically around the clock on all this stuff, taking calls and emails from me at all hours, and I, especially after this long exchange, really want to thank him for all of his, his constant legwork on this.
Are these houses on Wantamaker Road, are they in your ward?
They absolutely are.
Okay.
And we'll be, we'll be chatting after the meeting.
Will be following up with the residents?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen, for speaking. Thank you. Are there any other comments from residents? Yes, sir?
No, he's not, he's just leaving.
Is that a yes or a no?
No.
No, okay. Are there any other comments from residents?
Should never stand up when he says that.
All right, so I'll close the hearing at this time, and I'll read the motion as follows. Motion to adopt ordinance number 2102 and ordinance amending chapter 162 zoning, section 600 floodplain conservation overlay district by repealing and replacing existing provisions, and I so move.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any comments from commissioners, staff, or residents? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Mr. President, the final item, CE3, which was a Montgomery County Comprehensive Plan Presentation, was made at our committee meeting and has been deleted from the agenda for this evening, so that concludes our business for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Director of Public Safety.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucre. We have two agenda items this evening. PS1 is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2108, chapter 156, vehicles and traffic, article three parking regulations, section 25, parking prohibited at all times, no parking between signs, no parking here at a corner, parking prohibited except certain hours, no stopping or standing, and I so move.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Yes, to his motion to advertise ordinance number 2114, amending chapter 156, vehicles and traffic, article three parking regulations, section 9.2, no left turn, and section 11, turns at intersections, for adoption at the regularly scheduled, scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on March 10th, 2016, at 7:30 p.m., and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff or residents? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
That concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. At this time, call on Commissioner John Spiegelman, Director of Public Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. We don't have all that robust an agenda tonight. Items PA 1 and PA 2 are non-voting items and have been deleted. So our only item is PA 3, which is resolution number 16-009, authorizing the disposition of certain Parks and Recreation Office records. This is a motion to adopt resolution number 16-009, authorizing the disposition of certain Parks and Recreation Office records as set forth in Exhibit A, and I so move.
Second. It's removed and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes the public affairs agenda for tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. At this time, I turn it over to Vice President Stephen Klein, Director of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Lucre. Treasurer Blumenthal is not with us tonight. He is excused. The treasurer's report is available at the Township Manager's Office for review by the public. FC1, motion to A, approve the December expenditures as previously circulated to the board in the amount of $3,173,109.47, and salaries and wages in the amount of $1,770,699.94. And B, authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers in payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of March 2016, and I so move.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Spiegelman?
Yes.
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 FC2, motion to approve the advance in travel expense activity for December 2015 as previously circulated to the board. Advance in travel expense reports were $0.86 and $86.28 respectively. 12-month expenses totaled $36,613.04, and I so move.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
FC3, motion to approve the clearing fund. The deferred revenue, expense, activity, and petty cash balances for the month of December as previously circulated to the board. Clearing fund receipts and disbursements for the month of December 2015 were $2,541.84 and $5,710.81 respectively. Deferred revenue, expense, receipts, and disbursements for the month of December 2015 were $52,568.21 and $39,131.37 respectively, and I so move.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff and residents? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
That concludes the finance committee agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. That concludes our formal agenda for this evening, and at this time, I request for comments from residents. Name and address, please, for the record, and if you keep your comments within the three-minute timeframe, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, Louisee Twymann. I moved to Willow Grove in 1985 after retiring from deputy sheriff of Philadelphia, and I didn't want another board meeting to go without me personally thanking this board and staff for your dedicated, long hours spent working on projects and activities to keep Abington Township one of the best places to live. Special thanks to Chief Kelly and the Police Department in keeping us safe. They're very professional and very courteous. I've had to call the ambulance to my house twice since December, and the policemen always arrive first. They're very, very courteous, and I really appreciate it. Also, I had my purse stolen when I was at the Golden Corral a couple of months ago, and I had my home keys in there. I called here. When I got home, the police regarded my house until I got home and made sure that everything was safe. I really, really do appreciate living in Abington Township, and I heard somewhere last week that Willow Grove made the top 10 cities' best places to live. Thank you all very much, and Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. This is Twymann. Any other comments from residents? Name and address in three minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Michael Curtis, Sr., 1137 Tyson Avenue. President Lucre, last week I came to the Public Affairs and talked about the e-Verify. At the committee meeting, not much took place. After the meetings were over, I spoke with Commissioner Spiegelman and our township solicitor. I have a copy of Pennsylvania's e-Verify. It has to deal with the contracts that they deal with. I forgot some of the information that our township solicitor had told me. It was a long day for me. I just have two requests. One, that a copy of this be put on Abington Township's website so anybody in the township or otherwise will be able to take a look at this and understand what I've been speaking about, and if our township solicitor would please go back over the information he told me about how the state's e-Verify also works in Abington Township. I'd appreciate that if that's possible.
Thank you, sir. Is that something that is doable, Counselor? You want to take a look at it first?
To look at the information of Mr. Curtis. I believe we had a discussion last week. I discussed with Mr. Curtis public bidding statutes in Pennsylvania. I discussed with him how e-Verify works here and, and throughout the country. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what Mr. Curtis wants me to take a look at now or what should be put on, on the website, but the, the legislation that was passed in 2011 essentially codifies what is already existing in the public bidding statutes. You have to produce certain information before you can bid on public works jobs, so it really, it didn't really, it doesn't really change the way we do business here. So, and it does not affect non-public works contracts. So there was a lot of talk last week about landscapers that people had to their houses and everything. That obviously wouldn't have any impact on that.
Okay, Mr. Curtis, you want to give that document you had to Michael, a favorite township manager, Commissioner Spiegelman?
And if I could just add in, one of the, one of the very interesting things that I gleaned from when, when Solicitor Clark was educating both Mr. Curtis and myself was that you probably, everyone, everyone hears that we accept bids from the lowest responsible bidder. When folks bid on the many public works contracts that go out, part of being a responsible bidder is e-Verify compliance by Pennsylvania rules. So anyone who is even in, in consideration has already passed that hurdle. That was a, a thing I didn't actually know before that, that I think we both learned from, from Mr. Clark. So now everyone knows.
Thank you.
President, may I just make a quick statement?
Briefly, yes.
Could you do it in the mic? Thanks.
I just wanted to thank our township solicitor for explaining some things for me. That's all I was asking for, is just a little bit more verification for the people out there that are here tonight in the room, and for those who watched the video to be able to understand, there is such a law, and what it does, how it represents, and what it can do for people in order to keep, basically it boils down to this, is trying to keep people safe, trying to make sure that people that work here are legally able to work here, as from my understanding. And I do appreciate all the information he told me and the discussion we had. I do appreciate that, sir, both of you. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis.
That's directed to you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll ask for comments from commissioners to close out our meeting. Commissioner Bowman?
I'd like to offer my condolences to the family of Brian Bigelow. Brian is the son of Lynn Bigelow, a longtime zoning board member here. Brian died shoveling snow unfortunately in the terrible snowstorm, and he is a proud son of Abington, so my condolences to his widow Eileen and his family.
Thank you. Commissioner Farron? Commissioner Farron.
Thank you, President Luker. Just a couple of things. In the past couple of weeks, I've had to work with a variety of people sitting in front of us. And I want to, from the fire department to our second alarmers to our police department on several issues. Lieutenant Malloy was the point person and had to deal with me multiple times, so I want to thank him for his patience with me, but also for the great work that they do. It's very much appreciated. Just a quick update on the little girl, Ally Turner, who had drowned a couple of weeks ago. She's down at CHOP and it is nothing short of miraculous what she's been doing. If you're following on Facebook, you know, CHOP prepares you for the worst and it forces you to work for the best. And she's made incredible progress. She's speaking a little bit, which they weren't sure was going to happen. She's pushing back on her own. She's aware and cognizant and it's very heartening to see. The support has been incredible from the community, from, you know, everybody. I keep saying the support has been amazing. It is very much appreciated by the family and the type of family they are is some of us are pushing for them to make sure they cover their own needs, their bills and their responsibilities. And meantime, they're trying to give back with their Just Fight Foundation. They're selling the T-shirts and some of the money is going back to start a foundation to get more information out there in terms of CPR and AED devices. I have to give a thank you to Jim Spalding and Cardiac Care who were allowed to come to New Life Church on Houston Road and give an introduction to CPR. We had over 100 people show up. Bridget Turner came down from CHOP to say a couple of words. It's just an incredible thing to see, especially with our little ones getting up and getting an opportunity to practice on some of the dummies. So God forbid they have to see that or be involved with that. They will have at least some kind of a background for it and most importantly, how to call 911 and how to handle a 911 call, especially for a child, but for all of us. So very much appreciative of Jim Spalding and New Life Church. And we are also looking into AED devices. I want to thank our Parks Director who's spoken to me a little bit about what we already have. We do have AED devices in some of our township properties, but maybe trying to fill some of those gaps in and we have people who are very much interested in doing that. So I want to thank you, Director Wendell. I want to thank everybody again for the Abington runs, for tolerating my little presentation. I've got a couple of phone calls out already and people are starting to trickle in. Support again from Director Wendell and other commissioners up here is very, very exciting, so hopefully that'll work well. And that transitions nicely into our 5Ks that are coming up. We have a Copper Beach 5K coming up. I think it's March 12th. I will let Commissioner Glesby talk about hers. We also have the Keep the Faith 5K. We have the Keep the Parade Running 5K, which supports our Fourth of July Parade, which is April 9th. I expect to be running and I expect many people to beat me, but I will try to be out there running. I want to thank everybody already in advance for supporting those 5Ks because of the causes they support. I'm going to give a little bit of a shameless plug here. My wife volunteered me to be an emcee at a penny party a couple of years ago and I'm not allowed to say no to my wife, so I had to do it. And I either did a good enough job or they were desperate, and I think it's the latter, that I've been invited back again to be the emcee. So February 19th at 6:15 in Fitzpatrick Hall underneath St. Luke Church, yours truly will be hosting the penny party with the Oscars theme 2016. So love you to come out and support it. It supports... All the proceeds support education. And in that vein, the Abington Community Task Force Scholarship deadline has been extended to February 19th. So if you're looking... If you're an Abington High School senior and you're looking for a scholarship, go to their Facebook page, find a scholarship opportunity, fill it out, and maybe seize an opportunity to help finance your education, which is so important. And finally, and I know I've spoken a little bit too long, I apologize, please get involved in your son's, your daughter's education, your children's education. There's been a couple of incidents and people tend to speak out in those moments, but that's not when you become involved. You should become involved all the time, right? Whether your son or daughter go to a public school, private school, charter school, whatever the case may be, the more you're involved, not only in their lives, which is probably the best part of the educational foundation that they're going to have going forward, but the more you're involved in kind of what's happening at the school, the more aware you are of the great things that are happening. We have amazing kids in this township who are doing incredible things. Every once in a while, they come here and they give us their science fairs. We have scholarships being won. We have students winning championships in bowling and basketball, boys, girls. We have our senior students going down to the grade schools to mentor the little kids and teaching them what it means to be a student in Abington. So get involved, not just because you think something's wrong, but get involved because there's so much good that you can do and you're going to be motivated to give back even more. And the only thing that's going to happen is you're going to feel great about the future we have coming up with our children. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Farron, thank you very much, sir. Good points. Commissioner Glesby.
Well, I wasn't going to mention the run, but I will. It's April 9th and it's in memory of my husband, Mike Glesby. And last, it's called Keep the Parade Running, which all the proceeds do go to the all-day events that happen around the Keswick-Glenside area and everyone's invited to from everywhere. And so again, April 9th. And last year, we raised with that run just about enough to pay for those fireworks, which everybody loves. And fireworks are not inexpensive, so we want to have the fireworks again. Also, I just want to thank Public Works Department, you know, these snowstorms, you've done a great job. And this morning, that was a shock, right? The sun was out at 6:30. I don't know what happened, but good job.
Thank you. Commissioner Hecker.
Thank you, President Luker. First, we want to wish a happy 29th birthday to Public Works Director Ed Michelau. I wanted to make the community aware of two things that are upcoming later in the month. I am delighted to report that the highly successful Coffee with a Cop program will be making its way to Ward 10 on Saturday, February 27th at 9:00 AM at the Corner Cafe in the Abington Shopping Center. So please come out and join the community policing division, your fellow commissioners, and grab a cup of coffee. And after you have your coffee, you can head over to the Township Yard to drop off any electronics that need to be recycled. I believe that's 9:00 to 1:00 PM, Ed? Okay, so we'll see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. Commissioner Kalanowski.
Ditto to many of the great things the commissioner's already mentioned. It's going to be a very cold weekend, so everybody please stay warm and Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Commissioner Kalanowski. Commissioner Klein.
Yeah, I wanted to take a moment to thank the best Director of Code Enforcement and Zoning, Larry Mateo. He does tireless work. He's not even here and I'm thinking, thanks. I mean, he does tireless work. It's selfless. He does it with such a calm demeanor. He's just... He's an asset to the township and it's just unfortunate that he's not here. Happy birthday, Ed.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. Commissioner Zepone. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Commissioner Hecker took my whole thing about the recycling event, but that's all right. I do want to actually jump off of what Commissioner Farron said. It's hard to add to what Commissioner Farron said because he has far outstripped me in volume of words, but it is truly amazing, the Just Fight effort in support of Ally and the Turner family has been incredible. And I'll give a shameless plug that my daughter's gymnastics team, the Hapra Y Twisters, they're going to be hosting their league championships and the theme is going to be Just Flip and Just Fight. Ally was a member of one of the gymnastics classes, so they're making up special pink Just Fight shirts, especially for this event. And a portion of all the proceeds from concessions and the 50/50s and everything that they do are going to go to the Just Fight Foundation. And again, happy birthday, Ed Michelau. Very happy birthday to you. And one more time, thank you, Mr. Penacow, for all your help with this flood stuff. It's been crazy. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I should have jumped in on PW7 earlier when we were thanking Commissioner Spiegelman, Farron, and Mr. Powers, Mr. LaFever, and Cheltenham Township officials to thank the residents who came out to the public meeting we had on that project to meet with the Army Corps. They were great, provided us with a lot of amazingly informative and professional feedback on it, hired an engineer, hired an attorney to participate in the process. So wanted to say thank you to those folks who really helped this move along to the next step. So thanks again.
That was a good meeting, that meeting. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rothman.
Just briefly, happy birthday, Ed. Happy Valentine's Day to my wife and Happy Valentine's Day to everybody out there. And I hear there's a prize for speaking the least, so I hope to get that. Excuse me.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. Just sincere congratulations to Lieutenant Tom McNamara, who I didn't graduate with, one year behind, but I did graduate with his wife, so I've known them a long time. He's done a terrific job and one thing that I can always say about the lieutenant was that he was always a voice of calmness when things were excitable. So he's done a stellar job. And congratulations to Sergeant Blythe and the two new officers. And Lieutenant Malloy, it's very nice of you to be warming that seat. You look good there.
Just a prop. We're going to put Freed there next time.
I got to put it up a little higher.
Thank you, Commissioner Markman.
So I actually didn't know Lieutenant McNamara, but to hear his accolades and all the things he's done to contribute to the township, I'll tell you, to have someone like that around for all those years keeping us safe, both from the police standpoint and the fire standpoint, was very, very impressive. So I just wanted to thank him and just give him some accolades for everything he's done for this township. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Markman. Commissioner Schreiber.
Ditto on that and congratulations to our new police officers. I have two items that... First of all, Roslin Valley Business Association, which is just flourishing at this point.